I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brokaw?
This is Henry.
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
Reitner?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Ister?
We'd like to start tonight's meeting with introductions. And Brad, where you at?
In the back.
I just want to add that, just a few things, that Brad's been married for nineteen years, three children, Jacob, Brennan, Cameron, attended Manstree University, hired September 4th, 2001, dated promotion to corporals September 28th, 2010. Actually, he's the only officer living in the city of Sunbury right now, we'll try to keep it that way. Years of service, thirteen years. Of course, everybody knows he's involved in many volunteer programs, but I do want to introduce, and I want everybody to make sure you understand one thing, we had four people I interviewed for this position, and they were all qualified to do this job. This is one of the toughest things I've done since, in all years I've been mayor, because they're all dedicated people for the city of Sunbury, and any one of them could have been a good chief. Mr. Hare will be our chief. I'd like to congratulate you.
Would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to thank the mayor and the council for their support. I'm going to do my best to keep the police department moving. We have a, I made a mistake before by saying we're a great group of guys, we have a great group of police officers, including Jamie, so I have to include her too, but we have a really good group, and Sunbury should be proud of our police department, which I know they are, and look forward to filling in my new role. So, thank you.
Audience comment on any of the agenda items? Or we'll let Brad know. Is there any audience comment on the agenda items at this time?
I have one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve Mazzio also lives in Sunbury. Yes.
Yes, he does. Yes, he does. That's true. I'm all right with that, you're correct. Thank you for that. We do have two people that live in the city. CDBG update. Tyler?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who do not know who I am, my name is Tyler Vibroski, I'm with City Council Government. Tonight is the final public hearing for on the city of Sunbury's 2014 Community Development Block Grant Competitive Application. For those of you who, I guess, haven't been to the first public hearing, City Cog and the city of Sunbury have been working towards a competitive grant application for reconstruction of sixteen, or, excuse me, Chestnut Street, my mind's on Berwick right now. Chestnut Street, a total reconstruction, part of a $3.7 million project right now. Part of the whole reconstruction project is looking towards rebuilding all the stormwater sewer, water infrastructure, resurfacing, repaving the whole street, the curbs, the sidewalks, the intersection at Second and Chestnut, as far as rebuilding the streetlights and everything else. Like, missing?
Streetlight.
Yeah, the street, the lighting along the streets in general, so, pretty large-sized project. I think Jamie's going to talk about just the overall budget, the project, for everyone's knowledge.
It's a lot of numbers, I don't know why I get to talk about it, but I will. I don't know if you want officially for the record to just recess the meeting and bring home, carry the word.
We can do that. Officially, we're going to put this meeting on hold, and Jamie will have the floor for the new meeting.
All right. Tyler gave you the project description for the Chestnut Street Competitive. The estimate for project cost, as Tyler said, is right around $3.7 million. Right now, what we have is we have $500,000 of Keystone Community Grant Funds. The city has committed $200,000 of liquid fuels funds. City has also committed $6281.10 of CDBG funds from 2011 through 2014 funding. Pending, we have a Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant for $80138. That is supposed to be considered by the Commonwealth Financing Agency at their September 9th meeting. We also have, the municipal authority has put in for a PA Small Water and Sewer Grant for $90,000, and that again is also at that same CFA September meeting. We have this competitive application, which originally we thought we would be putting in $500,000, however, Bill Segal informed us today that the state has upped the competitive amount to $750,000, so I think I'm going to change the budget to ask for all of it. It'll help.
Good idea.
And then, we also have a PennDOT Transportation Alternative Program Grant for $1 million pending, which is also supposed to be awarded by the end of September. So, right now, we have a lot of funding in place, we have a lot of funded funding pending. What we're looking at doing, the city has committed their construction loan funds if necessary to put towards this project. The municipal authority has stated they would be willing to borrow through the PennVest program if necessary. So, as we move forward in our application, we're going to put the funding that we have secured, the funding we have pending, and then explain in the budget section also that if the other grants that are pending are not secured, then we have a recourse to go through with the loan funds that are necessary to be able to move forward with the project. If it turns out that we don't get all the grits that we have out there by that September, we don't have them, we do have the option of moving forward with a phased approach, so you could look at doing Phase 1 from Front Street to Third Street as one piece, and then doing a Phase 2 at a later time. We're going to meet, you know, we have a meeting set up in August for the 21st to discuss all the options that are out there, you know, based on what happens with funding. But, the project budget is the $3.7 million with, right now, with pending and secured, we have that covered. It's the ones that are pending are not secured, we'll have to figure out how we're going to do that. Any questions on any of those numbers?
Jamie, as it looks right now, we've got money to do Phase 1 now.
Yes, as it looks right now, secured, bank, ready to go. We have, we have about a third of the money we need, and Phase 1 is about a third of the stretch, although you are also looking at the Second Street intersection, so that would be a little more expensive with that traffic signal. But yes, I think we should have enough money to do Phase 1 if we want to move forward with just that, with the money we have secured.
2015.
Yes. Yes, we're looking at bidding. Hopefully, we find out about the funding in September, we're hopefully going to be ready to bid. Right now, we're doing the permitting, lease sending over all the paperwork for permitting, so we should have permits secured when we know about funding, and then we should be able to move to bidding in October to get started late this year with the utility work that can be done over the winter, and then the street work right away in spring.
And I'm assuming that the completion of Phase 1 would benefit us more to get more money for 2 and 3, that?
Yes, if it turns out that we just move forward with Phase 1, I know at least with someone funding like through PennDOT, they do like to see, oh, this is what you did, now we'll give you money because we see what you're going to do, we can do the next phase. Yes, it would help if we don't get all the funding to do the whole thing right now, or want to finance what we don't get. I think it would help, it would just be longer until the rest is done. Okay, hi.
Okay, I think number 3 on the agenda is just review of the resolution to apply for the CDBG Competitive Grant, that's sitting at David's desk right now. It just basically outlines that the city's going to apply for this 2014 CDBG application, that all the rules and regulations that come with applying for CDBG Competitive Grant funding have been followed up until now, and that City Council Governments will be applying for grant funding on behalf of the city of Sunbury. Does the public have any questions or comments about the Chestnut Street Reconstruction Project? Okay, none? Yeah, I guess we're going to adjourn the second public hearing and just ask that the council review and approve the resolution to apply for the 2014 CDBG Competitive Funding. Thank you.
Okay, that part of the meeting is over, now we're back to the council meeting. Motion to accept the, to apply for the future block grant money.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Here.
Rick, Commercial Inspection Rate Change.
Okay, we talked about this at the last meeting, and I went a little bit more research when I did that, and everybody seems to be on point with this, but this is where we at. We're at the city of Sunbury, wants to make a change to the fee schedule for commercial property inspection, and now therefore the following changes will be in effect in 7:00 a.m. Tuesday, July 29th, 2014. Demolition of commercial properties will go from one cent per square foot to five cent per square foot. Plumbing, basically plumbing and mechanic and electrical are going to be the same. For every, the minimum rate inspection rate's going to be $75, and for every thousand dollars under permit, over that, it will be $10 per thousand. Mechanical, $75, and for every additional thousand over the $7,500 would be $10 per thousand. Electrical, under $500,000 will be 1.5% of the total construction cost. $500 to $1 million will be $7,500 plus 1 and 1/4% of the total construction cost over $500. Minimum inspection rate is $75. I'd like to make a motion that council accepts this resolution.
Or that electrical is over $500,000, or am I, is this wrong here?
Over, yeah. Under $500,000 is 1.5% of the total cost. From $500,000 to $1 million, it's $7,500, plus 1 and 1/4% of the total over $500,000.
Okay, what's our minimum inspection rates now?
Uh, we get, we get an $8 per unit charge. As I said last, last meeting, we did a $134,000 project in a commercial building here, and we got $50 inspection permit, that's the fee that was charged in place of this. The payment fee was $50.
And we're probably losing money at that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Here.
Reitner?
Yes.
Okay, Jim, Serve Alcohol City Property?
I'm going to take and make a motion to have a waiver, a river festival on the river on August 16th for the, around the ban apparently on the river, and serving alcohol. And the River Festival, yes, on the river. Then it starts, I don't know, seven o'clock.
Mr. Schreck?
Yes.
What time does it start, sir?
7:30, it should be over by 11:00.
7:30 till 11:00.
I'm going to celebrate the 25th anniversary of River Festival. It's like a special occasion.
Okay.
Any questions? Time to second.
Second. Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Here.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
What's yours?
Okay, same thing up in Container Waiver, Renaissance Festival, August 1st, on the river. Megan, is there any bands?
There will be, I understand.
There'll be bands, okay. Is there any questions regarding the Renaissance on August 3rd? If not, then we'll start on the 3rd.
I'll second it.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Here.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, appoint Linda Schlegel-Collard to the Airport Authority Board as a non-voting member. The city has always had somebody in the past that was on this. Our last representative was Bob Snyder, he has moved away, so it wasn't open, and Linda's volunteered, I guess, to do it, so anyway, I'm just, I'm making a motion that we appoint Linda Schlegel to represent us as our, our part of the airport.
I'll second it. Shipman?
Here.
Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Persing?
Yes.
Who are the paying voices, Dale?
Yeah, we need to approve the payroll fund of $132,158.21, $16,104.11 for liquid fuels.
Second. Reitner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Here.
I wanted to, Megan, did you have anything else to say about SRI? Didn't want to blow you off or anything. Got everything covered?
You've prepared everything for the first meeting.
Right, well, I just wanted to say something, thought of something. Okay. Keystone Community Grant Coordinator, I just want to announce that the city has committed to that in the beginning of the year. We still haven't been designated 100% on that, so it's not officially started yet, but what that is, is Cheryl Delsite will be that position in some point in time, she'll be spending some time down at the SRI building. The Keystone Grant is, used to be part of the old Elm Street, so what it's going to be is, it's going to be our funneling of money for funds in the future, what we want to do. So Cheryl will be involved in this, you know, there's money coming from Keystone into the Chestnut Street project, the 12th Street Hill Neighborhood project, there's money coming actually from Keystone from that, and like I say, things that we do in the future will be, so we're going to try to stay ahead, and as we come up with these, some of these programs, some of the things we're going to talk about here in a minute, we're going to constantly have Cheryl to look into where we're going to get this from, this, you know, now instead of just bugging Jamie all the time, we're going to get Cheryl and Jamie at the same time, so it's just a way that we can be proactive and looking for money ahead of time with the projects that we anticipate and keep moving forward, instead of coming up with the projects and trying to find the money. So I just want to announce that, and when that officially gets done, we get that certification, then I'll let everybody know, but at that point in time, I can say Cheryl will spend some time down at the SRI office. The Raspberry Avenue Improvement Project, what that is, and I don't know if there's anybody here who lives in that area, but what we've been looking at, and Dale's been involved in this with me at the same time, if you look between 3rd and 4th Street, between Church Street and Penn Street, Penn Street, the people who live in Penn Street don't even really have a street in front of them, they have a concrete slab out front, they're parking in dirt, and the goal would be to take that whole area from Church Street, all the way, pretty much up to Catawissa, you know, I mean Catawissa, to Chestnut Street, because less than, the home's right on Chestnut, but if you think there's a building right now for sale where Oakes's, where the oil place, where it used to be, deep panel, I just found that the city actually owned it back in the 70s. Anyway, that, that building is not in very good shape, but between those two rows of homes, between what we would devise as a parking area, between putting some, some trees and that type of thing, and then all the way up again, of course, the railroad owns that parking lot that we lease from them, that people use for parking. So the long-term goal would be look at that whole entire area there, and to make that, a lot of it is blight right now, and to fix up, make that part of our blight removal, make that part of our, our future improvement in the city of Sunbury. So what we're announcing tonight is that will be one of the areas we'll be looking for Keystone money in the future, and it looks to me like about, like I say, between the, the street paving and the homeownership and the railroad, it looks like four, and the people that own that building and they're trying to sell right now, we have five or six different ends come into that, that project, so it'll take some, some wild work on, and Dale's going to work with the railroad right now to see if we can, I believe in, there's nobody tougher to work with in the railroad, but we're going to at least try, and see if we can use, because that's a pretty big area, and it just needs some, you know, all the wonderful things we're doing in the neighborhood right now to improve, we need to get after that area. So, again, we're just setting it in place, the things in the future, and how we're going to take it piece by piece, so you'll hear more about that also. Any questions on that? If anybody knows what I'm talking about. Okay, audience comment. Just me. Hello. Need names?
Sandy Walters.
Oh, okay.
I'm Sandy Walters, and I live at 507 Chestnut Street. I have properties at 509, 513, and 500. But I'm not here to talk about my properties or me. I'm here to talk about the article that was in the paper yesterday. I guess it was written by the Daily Item and Code and whoever, about the Peters property. I just thought that it was so out of line, so terrible to take a family and three members of family who are, who have been in this area for years, trying to make a business and bring business to the city, and have their picture in the paper. Yeah, they, maybe the building isn't up to par, up to code, but believe me, and I can tell you, there's a lot more. Now, is that going to be a weekly thing? Are we going to have the building of the week, where they take, you know, get somebody else and take pictures of their problems? It really did upset me, and believe me, I am not a Monty Peters fan. I definitely am not. I have had many run-ins with him, and our daughter and son-in-law have lived in Sunbury on Chestnut, and we've had run-ins with Monty, but I don't think that that entitles him to have his picture in the paper and an article written. I don't know how you, how you think you're going to bring small business people into town, and, you know, the first time they run into hard times, you're going to put their picture in the paper and take pictures of their building? I'll tell you, if you want, if, if the Daily Item's here, and for your next time that you want to put a building in, you get the Wiser Building on Raspberry Avenue. That building is on Raspberry Avenue, Raspberry Avenue, over the bank from the Daily Item building, and that building is a shambles. It is.
That building's no longer there, Wiser.
Oh, yes.
No, 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 no.
Wiser.
Oh, Wiser, I'm sorry, they said Wiser.
Wiser Building.
I'm sorry.
Yes, but, you know, Marty Wiser's a drinking buddy of people, and they just, you know, just pass it over. And for 54 years, I lived next door to the Whelan House, and that, I've got to tell you, is, was something to see, just something to see. And now Mark Gettens has bought that house, and he is remodeling it, and he is putting money into that. I mean, there was six layers, six layers of tarp on that house for a roof, and the water went into the walls, that they had to take the walls off and take all the insulation out of that house. It was sopping wet. And that house was there for years. And we, in the neighborhood, and Code knows, they were called, and they were there, but then between them and Apple Bombs and a couple other people, the house was in the day, nobody was ever called over there. So, I'm, I am just, I'm upset that they put that article in the paper, they singled out someone that's trying to bring, I mean, I have six apartments, and they all have Peters appliances in, you know, and when I call him, he's there. And I, I just feel really bad for him, and like I said, I'm not a Monty Peters fan, but it's not about him.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Rand Vienna, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Audubon United Methodist Church and Group Mission Work Camps. We, Audubon United Methodist Church has agreed to co-sponsor a Group Mission Work Camp for next summer, July 12th through the 18th of 2015. The reason I'm coming to, it's taking a little bit longer to come as opposed to before, but it's because the school district, it would take a little while for us to get the school district to, which they unanimously, unanimously agreed to lodge our work camp that's going to be coming next summer. I just want to give you a brief description of what, what it is. Work camps are intensive one-week trips that help people grow in Christian faith through service. Individuals and youth around the country will spend one week in our community performing hands-on home repairs for elderly, low-income, and disabled families, and maybe others. The work at each home will be done by five people, young people, and at least one adult leader, representing many denominations. Eligible repair projects could include porch repair and construction, step repair, exterior and interior painting, weatherization, wheelchair ramp repair and construction, mobile homes, skirting, and minor roof repairs. Both labor and materials are free to qualifying, qualifying households, and then we will have an application for that, for people to submit. There will be approximately, and this is an approximation, between 300 and 400 people coming into Sunbury next, next year to do these repairs. We estimate anywhere from 65 to 80 homes to be worked on. Our, what I'm coming to the city and introducing it to you is, I'm putting together a support team right now, through our church, we would like to put together a support team that will help us to, we can't do this all ourselves, we need organizations. We'll be going to different organizations like, hopefully Rotary, Kiwanis, SRI, Kiara Agency on Aging, Northumberland County has, has already like one of our biggest supporters. If any of you have watched the television last year, or last week, they just left Shemokam, they were out in Shemokam, they repaired and did work on 58 homes in Shemokam, there were 396 cameras. The investment to the community, it's not $3 million, but it is anywhere between $250,000 to $300,000 with the repairs that are done. That's an investment in this community, and it can go, you know, we could pick homes in Northumberland, Upper Agasson Township, Lower Agasson Township, around the area also, but I'm sure we can find enough in Sunbury to, to do this. What we're asking, I'm asking for is if there's anyone that's willing, we would absolutely like to have a representative from the city. I don't care what department it's from, I don't care, it could be any department, but we will also basically be looking for people that have some contracting experience and construction experience to help us do site selection and site assessments, so that we know what we're getting into. That's, if we can get approximately six to eight people that are knowledgeable in that, and we will be meeting prior to it, we'll be doing assessments probably beginning in March, the site selections will be done this fall, hopefully by the end of September. I'm very excited, because to me, it's just something that, you know, and my faith comes into this, because I truly did not feel we were going to get it done for 2015. We really thought that we would not get the approval of the school district. We were actually looking at 2016, and because it was just, we were coming up against a brick wall, but the power of prayer really worked, and, and they all said yes, I mean, they would house the kids. This is a senior high group, that means they're in the age range of like 14, 15, up to the age of, well, adults, there's adult leaders that come with them. I'm excited, I really hope that you are excited also about it, anyone that's interested in knowing more about it, most of you know how to get in touch with me, but there will be an article in the newspaper, there'll be, in the newspaper, there'll be press releases, and I will have things to, posters, applications, all that distributed around to different churches, organizations, through, hopefully, down churches, organizations, through, hopefully downstairs, we can put a poster where they can call for an application and that kind of thing. The other thing that I am asking for, and, and I want you to give it some consideration, we do have most of our funding, most of our funding is secured. What we are looking for is some donations or some contributions to help us, any amount would be wonderful, any amount at all. If you have any discretionary funds through the city that you can allocate anything, e- even if it's for the future, whatever we do in excess, we are putting into a, a place where we can utilize this for the future, because we would like to see this occur every other year between Sunbury and Shamokan, the, the two communities there, or another community that's close by. Mifflinburg also is sponsoring a camp next year, that's three weeks prior to ours, and we're working together to make sure we don't overlap in the different areas. If she comes, Milton, Watson Town area, Kewinsville, whatever, then I will go the other direction, and we're mapping it out together. It's just an awesome opportunity, and I ask that you really give it a great, great consideration. And I do have a DVD for you, for gentlemen's lady, to see in the future, just to look at it and see what can be done. It was awesome out in Shamokan, I spent all day in there last Thursday, and I'm telling you, the impact it makes in the community isn't just the physical impact, it's the community worth impact that's there, that you are saying, I am proud to live in this community because of what is done, what's done, because we, there were neighbors that weren't even part of the camp that came and worked on your neighbor's home, just because, just because, and it, they, you know, and that, that's what you want in your sense of community, so, please.
Please, let me ask you one.
You can ask anything you want.
And I understand a program, it's a great program, in fact, I work, a guy sits across from me every day at Woodmoat, just spent two weeks in Georgia doing the same thing, so I know what it's all about, but I gotta be honest with you, this has been tried to some degree in the past, is there criteria, that it's gonna be rental homes, gonna be private homes?
They, they want homeowners, is what they're looking at, homeowners.
We, we struggle, and, and, and I'm not sitting here to make, this is nothing negative about, I just want you to understand, we struggle to identify some of them, and you'll get all the cooperation needed in the Code Office and the rest of us, I'm sure of that, but I know we struggled in the past to identify enough properties, and we, if you're bringing out many people, we surely want to make sure that we have enough property to do that, so anything, anybody in the audience, if you, if you're, what happens is you end up with neighbors, it might be elderly, for example, they can't fix their front porch, that type of thing, and, but they're, I don't know if embarrassed is the right word, but they don't want to tell anybody, but if you have people in your neighborhood in that situation, you need to let Randy know, you need to, or where we end up putting it all together, you need to let us know, then let somebody from her organization go and talk to them that. There's clearly a need for that in the city of Sunbury, but I'm telling you, we had a heck of a time identifying them, and again, we're not after rentals, we're after private property. So anything, you mean, you said about the inside, that type of stuff, so.
Right. There is a, there is a slight gray area that will be considered, if it's a rental property where you have like, say it's a, a mother and father live on one side, and that, the son and daughter lives on the other side, you know, we know they're not gonna kick mom and dad out, you know, that kind of thing. And, and, I mean, we're, it's very, we're definitely do not want to, we're out there to help the people that are living in the property, I, I mean, if somebody's disabled and needs a ramp, you know, and they're renting, we're, you know, we're gonna help them get a ramp, especially if they need a ramp, you know, but if they, if it's just...